Good morning, everyone. I will now call to order the July 20, 23 Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. Acting Administrator Nancy Bush, please call the roll.
Good morning. So first, I'll introduce our staff here. We have Tony Mayer, Nick, Clerk to the Board, and we have Jeffrey Muntz, who is County Counsel today. Commissioner Scholl?
Here.
Commissioner West?
Here.
Commissioner Schrader?
Here.
Commissioner Savas?
Present.
Chair Smith?
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you've joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. General public will be taken at the usual allotted time. I would like to remind all participants, including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public that Robert's Rules of Order will be enforced in this business meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. Nancy Bush, can you introduce the first item?
Yes, ma'am. First item is Public Hearing Number One: Approval of a Board Order Approving Boundary Change 2023-001 and Annexation to the Clackamas River Water District. No fiscal impact, no county general funds are involved. And we have Jeff Muntz here to discuss that.
Thank you, Nancy. Yes, this is first of three public hearings we have this morning regarding annexations into the different service districts in the county. The first is to the Clackamas River Water District. This is the property located at 17085 South Kildere Road. It is a single-family residence, 3.78 acres, assessed at $139,450. The district has a water line in South Kildere Road which can serve the property. The petitioners are requesting to replace their well service with water service from the district. The criteria for the board to consider in this annexation petition is the county's comprehensive plan, and in Section 7B, the requirements for development of a domestic water supply in the county are included there. Metro Code also supplies additional criteria to support the development of these public services. The proposed annexation is consistent with the county's comprehensive plan and the Metro Code, as well as state law for this type of an annexation request, and our recommendation is to approve Annexation 2023-001 to the Clackamas River Water District.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Do the commissioners have any clarifying questions or comments about this particular annexation? Seeing none, I will now open the meeting for public testimony on just this particular annexation. I will take in-person testimony first. Is there anyone in the room? Seeing none. Tony, do we have anyone on Zoom?
If you would like to testify on Boundary Change 2023-001, please use the Raise Hand feature, and I will call on you in the order received. Madam Chair, do not have any hands raised.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing and ask the board, is there any further discussion on this matter?
Chair, I just struck me here this morning, and maybe it's a question staff can come back with an answer for. I don't expect one now. But I'm just kind of curious on these, as we do a lot of these. Are we doing these on our dime, or is that cost shared for these procedural?
I can answer that, yeah. What we're doing is a statutory required duty or service of this board. And so, yes, it's on our dime for this portion. We do charge a fee for some of the cost recovery for these annexations, as well as Metro does for those that are within the metro boundary. So I can't remember what the fee was on this one, but it's around $1,000 roughly that we recover. It's something if the board wishes to take a look at what the cost recovery would be for this and set new fees, we can do so, and it'd be appropriate for a policy session. But it's something our office has been looking at as well in tracking this year, you know, what it actually costs versus what we're collecting, because we couldn't find the source of when that was passed either. But that has been the policy for quite some time for my predecessor, Ken Martin, who was a consultant doing this previously. So we've been tracking that this year, and we can come back to you with kind of the results of how it compares, and can kind of discuss how that would be equitable, as well as try to be more cost recovery effective.
Right. I'd appreciate that. I think it's valuable. I'm mindful of that because, number one, we are on a fixed income, meaning we're on a fixed tax base, whereas some of these districts are rate-based. So their ability to recover costs or make up the difference is greater than ours.
Yeah, and they have a piece of this, the work that they do as well in reviewing these applications, that's separate from then when we review it and schedule these and set out the notices and so on. So most of our cost is affiliated with this legal process, and then posting and so on, where they're kind of vetting more of the information before it comes to us.
Appreciate the response.
Yep, and I look forward to that update, too, to seeing what it's really costing us on this. It's a lot of legal work.
We've gotten pretty efficient at it as we're going through more of these, but yes, I mean, it's a bit of time.
Okay, thank you. I will entertain a motion.
Chair, I move we approve the Board Order Approving Boundary Change 2023-001 and Annexation to the Clackamas River Water District.
Second. Commissioner West has moved we approve Board Order Approving Boundary Change 2023-001 and Annexation to the Clackamas River Water District. Commissioner Schrader has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Tony, would you please call the poll?
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Nancy, what's next?
All right, next is Public Hearing Number Two: Approval of a Board Order Approving Boundary Change 2023-002 and Annexation to Clackamas Service District Number One. No fiscal impact, no county general funds are involved. And Jeff Muntz?
All right, thank you, Nancy. Yes, the second public hearing. This is for an annexation into our Clackamas County Service District Number One. This property is located between Southeast Jennifer Street and the Clackamas River in the city of Happy Valley. It was recently annexed into the city, which then prompted this process. It's 53 acres of vacant industrial land. The district has a sewer line available in Southeast Jennifer Street, west of the intersection with Southeast 106th, and a line east of that intersection to serve the property. The petitioner is seeking this sewer service to further develop the property in our industrial area of the county. Clackamas County Service District Number One has an agreement with the city of Happy Valley for the district to be the provider of sewage treatment and transmission for the city. The district, in turn, has an agreement with the Surface Water Management Agency of Clackamas County and the Tri-County Service District to create the Water Environment Services in an ORS 190 partnership known as WES, of course, just a collective service provider for all three districts. The criteria for the board to consider is this agreement, as well as the county's comprehensive plan, Metro Code and so on, as it applies to the development of these public services in this area of the county. This petition is consistent with the agreements, our code, I'm sorry, our comp plan, the Metro Code, and state law. And as a result, we recommend that you approve Annexation 2023-002 to the Clackamas County Service District Number One.
Do commissioners have any questions or clarifying comments on this particular annexation? I will now open the meeting for public testimony, and I will take in-person testimony first on this particular boundary change into CSD Number One. I see no one who wants to testify in person. Tony, do we have anyone online?
If you would like to testify on Boundary Change 2023-002, please use the Raise Hand feature, and I will call on you in the order received. Madam Chair, do not have any hands raised.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing and ask if there are any further comments from commissioners. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Chair, I move that we approve the Board Order Approving Boundary Change 2023-002 and Annexation to Clackamas Service District Number One.
Second. Commissioner West has moved we approve the Board Order Approving Boundary Change 2023-002 and Annexation to Clackamas Service District Number One. Commissioner Schrader has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Tony, please take the poll.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. Nancy, what's up next?
Next is Public Hearing Number Three: Approval of a Board Order Approving Boundary Change 2023-007 and Annexation to the Sunrise Water District. No fiscal impact, no county general funds are involved. And Jeff Muntz?
All right, thank you. I'll mention that this matter, as well as the previous one, we had some exhibits added. They were omitted from the packets when they were originally submitted, but those were maps and legal descriptions of the property. Those had been included in all of the previous notices that were required for this hearing, so no problem with that. Just wanted to draw to your attention that those are some things that added to the process. This is an annexation to the Sunrise Water Authority. This property is located near Southeast 142nd and Highway 212, Tax Lot 22E, 11A, 00800. It is vacant forested property with residential zoning. Territory consists of 5.59 acres and has an assessed value of only $3,039. The district has a water line in Southeast 142nd Avenue which can serve the property. The petitioner is seeking to replace a well on the property with water service from the district to enable future development of this site. The criteria for the board to apply here is the Clackamas County's comprehensive plan, Section 7B regarding domestic water supply, and the Metro Code and state law for the development of these public services. In reviewing the annexation proposal, this proposed annexation is consistent with our comprehensive plan, applicable code, and state law, and we recommend approval of Annexation 2023-007 to the Sunrise Water Authority. And I'll note, they're out of order somewhat, because we get these in and we label them in order, but then we work with usually Department of Revenue to update some of the exhibits that you're seeing, the maps, legal descriptions. It's a common area that we go back and forth, so that's why you'll see them out of sequence over time. But a lot of additional ones are coming your way soon.
Thank you, Jeff. Do commissioners have any questions or comments? I will now open a public hearing, and I will accept in-person testimony first on this annexation into Sunrise Water District. Is there anyone in the room who would like to testify? Seeing none. Tony, do we have anyone on Zoom?
If you would like to testify on Boundary Change 2023-007, please use the Raise Hand feature, and I'll call on you in the order received. Madam Chair, do not have any hands raised.
I will now close the public hearing and ask if there's any further discussion. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Chair, I move we approve the Board Order Approving Boundary Change 2023-007 and Annexation to the Sunrise Water District.
Second. Commissioner Scholl has moved we approve the Board Order Approving Boundary Change 2023-007 and Annexation to the Sunrise Water District, and Commissioner Schrader has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Tony, please take the poll.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much, commissioners. Nancy, what's next?
So next, we have the Consent Agenda, and, Tony, can you please read the agenda for us?
Clackamas County Consent Agenda: Elected Officials. Item 1: Approval of Previous Business Meeting Minutes for the Board of County Commissioners. Item 2: Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with the Portland State University National Policy Consensus Center for Phase 2 of the Clackamas County Local Public Safety Coordinating Council Equity Plan. Agreement value is $30,000 for one year, funding through the Oregon Criminal Justice Commission. No county general funds are involved through the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office. Item 3: Approval of a Personal Services Contract with EverHealth LLC for Comprehensive Correctional Medical, Dental, Pharmaceutical, and Mental Health Services at the Clackamas County Jail. Total value is $32,758,411.32 for five years, funding through public safety, local option levy funds, and $23,586,056.15 in budgeted county general funds for the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office. Transportation and Development. Item 1: Approval of a Board Order Accepting Right-of-Way and Simultaneously Vacating a Portion of Red House Road. No fiscal impact, no county general funds are involved. Item 2: Approval of an Amendment Increasing Annual Not-to-Exceed Limit of a Contract with Tyree Oil Incorporated for Fuel Services. Amendment value is $4.5 million. Contract value is increased to $22.5 million for nine years, funding through Fleet Services user fees. No county general funds are involved. Health Housing and Human Services. Item 1: Approval of Amendment 2: Expanding the Scope of Work, Extending the Term, and Increasing the Value of a Contract with Clackamas Service Center Incorporated for Outreach and Engagement in On-Call Emergency Services. Amendment value is $290,149 for one year. Contract value is increased to $476,649 for 1.67 years, funding through Supportive Housing Services Measure Funds. No county general funds are involved. Item 2: Approval of Amendment 1: Increasing Funding and Duration of a Local Subrecipient Blueprint Grant with Todos Santos for the Blueprint for a Healthy Clackamas Ready Smile Program. Amendment value is $29,707.60 for one year. Agreement value increased to $74,144.57 for over three years, funding through fiscal year 2022, restricted fund balance. No county general funds are involved. Item 3: Approval of a Revenue Agreement with Care Oregon Incorporated for Outreach Services. Anticipated value is $227,256 for 10 months, funding through Care Oregon Incorporated. No county general funds are involved. Item 4: Approval to Apply for a Funding Opportunity with the Oregon Higher Education Coordinating Commission for Round 2 Workforce Ready Grants to Increase the Capacity of Clackamas County's Workforce Services Unit. Grant value is up to $1.6 million for 2.7 years, funding through the Oregon Department of Human Services. No county general funds are involved. Item 5: Approval of Revenue Agreement with Care Oregon for the Primary Care Payment Model Program. Agreement value is $1,630,000 for one year, funding through Care Oregon. No county general funds are involved. Madam Chair, that concludes the list.
Thank you, Tony. Does any commissioner wish to remove anything from the consent agenda?
Yes, Chair, I'd like to remove Item A3 for discussion.
A3?
Yes.
And which is that one?
That was the one for the, essentially, the insurance services for the jail, or $23-some-odd million.
Okay, we will set that aside for further discussion at this business meeting. I will accept a motion, however, to approve all the items on the consent agenda except for A3.
So moved, Chair.
Second. Commissioner Savas has moved we can approve all consent agenda items except for A3. Commissioner Schrader has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Yes, Commissioner West?
I'm curious about timelines for these medical services to the jail.
Commissioner West, may I, would you do me a favor?
Yes.
If we can go ahead and approve the current motion on the table, and we can go back, and you'll be first up to discuss.
It's to this motion. So like, why, can we just, can I know why?
We can vote on it separately.
So what we're doing, we're approving the consent agenda except for, and then after this?
Except for, okay, thank you.
And then I'm gonna bring it back, if you would, please.
And I will, I will hold that comment till 30 seconds from now.
Just take the lead of your chair, and you will be fine.
Perfect, perfect.
Okay. Tony, please call the poll.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Now we will entertain a discussion regarding Item A3. And Tony, would you read that again, just for everyone's clarification?
Item A3: Approval of a Personal Services Contract with EverHealth LLC for Comprehensive Correctional Medical, Dental, Pharmaceutical, and Mental Health Services at the Clackamas County Jail. Total contract value is $32,758,411.32 for five years, funding through public safety, local option levy funds, and $23,586,056.15 in budgeted county general funds.
Thank you. Commissioner West, you're up.
Thank you. Commissioner Savas, was your concern based on the conversation we had earlier this week when we were going through the consent agenda specifically with this item? I know, I'm just kind of curious, like, what the thought process is about pulling this?
Well, I actually want to pull it for discussion, so it wasn't the idea pulling it all together.
Got it, okay.
So I just wanted to express, so let me just back up and say, I don't have a problem with the monetary aspect. I don't have a problem with the division of funds, whether it's paid for by the public safety option, or whether it's paid for by the general funds. I don't have no issues there. My issue is really the performance elements of it, and we've had some incidences in the jail that maybe if services or so forth were perhaps better enhanced. But mine is more contractual, and I thought that's, I thought from the questions, I take some responsibility that maybe staff would have, from the sheriff's office, would have replied back, or legal. I take some responsibility, because I've been very busy. I didn't pursue it, so I do take responsibility for that. I'm just not prepared to say yes today because of the unanswered questions with regard. So if it's important and imperative that it be done today, I'm fine with voting no, but I'm not at a comfort point with this yet.
Just a moment, please. Nancy, is there a timeline on this item? Do you know?
There is. Tony, do you have that timeline?
Okay, so, Paul, I think I understand where you're going with this. However, there's a timeline. The presenter of this consent agenda was, that was Lee Ebey from the jail, correct?
Yes.
Did he answer the questions that were presented to him at the time?
Not that I'm aware of.
There were unanswered questions regarding performance metrics.
Excuse me?
There were unanswered questions regarding performance metrics.
Right, uh-huh. Okay, and he didn't get back to us.
No.
Gee, jail people, that's not good practice. And when does this have to be approved? Today?
So it is an expired contract and does need to be approved.
Today.
Today, is my understanding, yes.
If it's already expired, if it's already expired, then it can be expired until next week.
Yes.
So I don't know that we're exactly in breach. Activities will continue at the jail, and medical treatment will continue at the jail. Commissioner Scholl?
Can I finish my comment?
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner West, go ahead.
Yeah, so my concerns were performance-based. We're also concerned, like, why is there only one? They're not the only provider. There are performance issues. I'm getting, just even from the nursing medical standpoint, there has been just some questions, I think we could perform, things that are important to know about. I share your concerns. It was on consent agenda, didn't have much time to address it until this week with the sheriff's office and the jail staff. I, you know, I just want to make sure we're providing that good oversight. Jeff, can you, is, if we're, so, is it today? Like, are we in breach? Like, can you clarify?
Well, the contract is expired. They're still performing services over there. So they, you know, we have to pay them for their services, so that will happen anyway, of course. This contract will be putting this in place until 2028, until June 30 of 2028, and that will include the scope of services that are in Section 3 of the agreement when you scan down into that. So that, I think, is where your questions are. This is, as I understand it, a new contract with the same provider, so it's the same scope of services they've been working under. I think that if you're looking more towards, you know, sort of what are their, kind of their protocols, you know, kind of their best practices that they're utilizing, I think that's, that's separate from what, how they have to perform under this contract. So the contract itself would be best to get in place so we can continue providing the services, but then questions about oversight and so on might be something to come back and circle, circle back to the sheriff's office on, and how they do that to answer some of your questions that you have about the quality of performance.
I'm curious about the procurement process, too, because, you know, and it's a little complicated, because there has been a lot of issues and angst within the healthcare system regarding contract nursing in general. It's been an issue that was in the legislature, it's been an issue throughout COVID. I have been a contract nurse, I get the whole thing. It's a different dynamic specifically with correctional facility. I just, I think it's important for us to know, this is a big-ticket item for a long time. It's not a consent agenda item, maybe? Like, it's a big-ticketed item that has a lot of questions that have, I've asked for certain documents to review certain policies and procedures from a nursing standpoint, on how we address certain issues that are healthcare-related that arise within a jail system. I've been reviewing those that have been provided by, that have been provided to me. So it's just, it has raised some questions. I don't know. I think it's totally reasonable to wait. I also don't want to cause a chain of unforeseen events because we do wait, right? Like, this is a little bit time, there is a timeline issue here.
Okay, we have two other commissioners who want to comment, and then I'll opine as well. Commissioner Scholl?
Yes, I understand. Commissioner Savas is and Commissioner West concerned. I think we can postpone this item for a week, get those questions answered, and then bring it up next Thursday. I would feel good about that.
Okay, Commissioner Savas?
Yeah, I just want to, just want to just highlight that, you know, combined here, it's about $56 million. It's a five-year commitment. And, you know, contractually is where I'm looking to see if, if it's been ran, as you heard me ask the question, did it run, was it ran by risk management? Was it ran by legal in only form only, or was it ran through the lens of performance with risk management in mind, and any mitigation of any, whether there are oversights or missteps or whatnot, that we recover some of our costs? I don't know. I don't know what our opportunities are, but it, those are the concerns I was hoping to get a better understanding. And again, I take, I take some responsibility for not getting feedback, or for not pursuing this, but at the same token is, it's usually routine, that staff will get back to us.
Yeah.
As well.
Commissioner Schrader?
Yes, my question is, how soon can we get the information, Nancy, that we need to see about this? Is there a list somewhere that, you know, we're talking about, there have been issues. So what have they been, and what has been the context in which these things have happened? And I guess the second piece of it for me is, are they the only contractor in town? Because they were the only ones that applied for the contract. So is there just not anyone out there that, when we put an RFP out, that they didn't respond?
They said they were the only bidder.
That's what I remember.
Was it a national search, or just local?
Just a moment, just a minute. I have two people in the queue.
That's all my question.
Yes, I can say that, you know, procurement process is put out through the normal processes statewide. So anybody looking to bid on state contracts, you know, through other municipalities as well, looks to that service to seek to bid. And so, yes, we had one bidder, it sounds like, in this case, but it's put through our normal process, and national companies do this all the time. We did the same thing with the national search for debris management, debris, you know, contractors. They, there were national firms that found us on this website, that people that are familiar with doing this type of work know where to look. So in that case, you know, goes through the procurement process, that is then reviewed by our office for legal sufficiency. You know, we don't review for kind of the best practices for contract nursing, for instance, because we're lawyers. You know, we look at the legal, legal terms. So that process has happened. I also wanted to mention that, Commissioner Savas, I'm sorry, you'd mentioned it was $56 million. The value is $32,758,000. Of that, the $23 million is county general funds, the rest would be the local option levy. It's not the addition, but, sorry.
It's only $32 million total.
Right, yeah, over five years. But no, I mean, I think you just added, and, yeah.
I did, I did add, so, my mistake.
So just those, I think that's how our process works. Your question's more about how the, how the work is getting done would be separate from the legal requirements in the scope of work. But, you know, if you hold it for a week, I mean, obviously, they're still performing those services. We need to pay them for that work, and it doesn't really change anything by waiting for a week. However, it's one more week without a contract in place, and that's not the best thing for folks that we're working with.
Nancy Bush?
Yes, just to mention a couple things. I've heard from staff, so this did expire on June 30. If you do decide to hold it a week, we can have staff make sure If you do decide to hold it a week, we can have staff make sure that they work with the sheriff's office staff to get the information you need for the Tuesday session, if you choose to do that.
And two of the commissioners will be gone on Tuesday's session, so there'll be the other three asking the questions. So if Commissioner West or Schrader has specific questions, you need to put those in writing before you leave or while you're gone. And we can discuss this on issues next Tuesday.
Okay.
And Board, do we know what we're asking? Do we know what information we want specifically?
I think that my questions were pretty specific. I haven't really added one, but if I was to add one, it would be what I just learned now is, if it expired on June 30th, why didn't we see it a month ago?
Yeah, and I'm wondering the same thing.
So there's my add.
Yeah, that's my add too as well, Commissioner Savas. I mean, gee, they come in at the last minute and expect us to slam bam, thank you ma'am, approve a very important contract of which we have had issues with at the jail. I understand, but Commissioners, we may have to pass this contract, make sure services continue at the jail, medical services, whether you're satisfied or not. And because we are also contractually obligated to provide medical services to the people at the jail. I'm just saying. Okay, maybe it's something we can work on as it goes forward. Jeff, you need to let us know on that.
Yes.
Okay? All righty, so we discussed that. We will move on. Let me take a look at my, where I'm at here. Nancy, what's next?
Yes, so what is next? We need to be, the Water Environment Services.
I will recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as Water Environment Services for the next item.
Yes, so the next item is the consent agenda for the Water Environment Services. And Tony, can you please read the agenda?
Water Environment Services Consent Agenda, one item, approval of a personal services contract with Corolo Engineers Incorporated for engineering services for the Tri-City Water Resource Recovery Facility Influent Pump Station Expansion Project. Contract value is one million, six hundred and ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollars. Funding through Water Environment Services Sanitary Sewer Construction Fund. No county general funds are involved.
Thank you. Does any Commissioner wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? I'll entertain a motion.
I have moved, we approve the consent agenda as read.
Seconded.
Commissioner West has moved for the approval of the Water Environment Services Consent Agenda, and Commissioner Scholl has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Tony, please take the poll.
Director Savas?
Aye.
Director Schrader?
Aye.
Director Scholl?
Aye.
Director West?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye, motion passes five zero. Thank you. I will now adjourn as the Water Environment Services Board and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners. Up next is Public Communication. The portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business which are properly the object of board consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon revised statutes and county code. Testimony is limited to three minutes. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public communication at BCC@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. I will now open the meeting for public testimony. I will take in-person testimony first. And I have a couple of cards here from folks who would like to talk. First, Chris Waller. Please come forward, state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Chris Waller, Jennings Lodge. The National Association of Counties, NACO, has this to say about equity and inclusion offices. Counties play a critical role in building vibrant communities for all individuals, often serving as a safety net for residents, and carrying out critical local functions like economic development and public safety oversight. To ensure all residents have what they need to achieve their fullest potential, including employment opportunity and access to health care, county leaders are taking actions to integrate diversity, equity, and inclusion into county operations. And how about our local cities? Here's what they have to say about diversity, equity, and inclusion. Oregon City, we ensure that our practices and policies create an inclusive and equitable environment for every member of the community. Happy Valley, the city council established a 2020 goal to support and foster a community and organizational culture that embraces diversity, equity, and inclusion. Diverse and vibrant backgrounds, perspectives, and abilities contribute to the health, welfare, and economy of Happy Valley. West Lynn, we are committed to a wide variety of actions related to diversity, equity, and inclusion. We are committed to a full, impartial, and transparent assessment of our practices and a comprehensive response in order to rebuild community trust and ensure the highest possible level of services moving forward. Estacada, we are committed to cultivating, advancing, and safeguarding an inclusive community where our differences are recognized as strengths and our systems provide equitable treatment and access for all. Lake as we go, we aspire to be an organization where every person feels safe, welcome, supported, and included. Our country is experiencing, experiencing a turning point, and we are having much-needed, difficult conversations about racial inequality. Milwaukee, the city of Milwaukee has made equity, inclusion, and justice a priority in how it serves the public and operates as an employer. Canby Area Chamber of Commerce, we acknowledge the vast diversity of our community. Canby's competitive advantage is that we promote an inclusive environment, reflecting the full spectrum of our community as a key to the success and strength of our businesses. Wilsonville, we advocate for equitable access and opportunity for every community member. We identify barriers to participation and inclusion and pursue programs, policies, partnerships, and ideas that remove those barriers. So as you can see, successful counties and cities recognize the importance of diversity, equity, and inclusion for their residents and businesses. Don't move Clackamas County backwards. Support your Office of Equity and Inclusion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Up next, Rick Clausen. Patrick Clausen, I beg your pardon. Is it Clayson or Clausen? Thank you. Please state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
My name is Patrick Clayson. I'm President of ASME 350-4, Water Environment Services. I live in Oregon City. I'm here, I was here last week with a small delegation representing my union to speak towards the cost of living adjustment that we're currently bargaining with the county. I'm back here today because we had our, we had bargaining again yesterday. And just three days after, three business days after we met with this board to discuss our concerns and wanted this board to talk with them, this board chose to remove from the executive meeting the line item which you guys would talk with your bargaining representative. So he shows up to bargaining with no direction from the board on what your opinion is and without having represented to the board what our offers were. He states that the board chose to remove that item, that he was here to represent the county's position and present to the board, that the board didn't wish to hear about it, and that the board told him that his next opportunity to present to you would be August 15th. So that means that the last time he spoke to you about this issue, by the time he speaks to you next, will be well over two months apart. And to have the board remove that from their item at the executive meeting, three days after we were here to address our concerns in a professional and respectful manner with the board, to us, it symbolizes that the board has no concern about what, what our wants, our asks, or needs are. And the image that the board presents while doing that is detrimental to how your workers perceive you and what they think their leadership and representation is here at the county. I just, I'm going to be back every week to speak on this issue because it's important to me and it's important to my membership. Martha, last week, you spoke about a Chinese delegation coming to your house.
Right.
And a dinner that you put on for them was great. Commissioner West, you spoke to how good of a cook Martha is and her graciousness in hosting them and that you were present. Commissioner Savas, last month at the president's meeting, I believe it was last month, you spoke about going over to Martha's house and eating there and having that. We're talking about cost of living adjustments that allow and afford my membership the opportunity to host their family and friends in events like that. This year, with Fourth of July just coming up, I have multiple magnitudes of membership that weren't able to have friends and family come over for traditional Fourth of July get-togethers because they couldn't afford the cost of living to put that on. And to have a board sit and talk about those things, the messaging is off. It's not, it's not correct. We just want to be heard.
Thank you very much.
I'll be back next week.
Mr. Savas, your light is on.
Yeah, I, I, with all due respect, I, I think that there might be a misunderstanding. And typically, the board does not sit at the dais on executive session items and opine. We are restricted. So we're, and so perhaps I think you might be misinterpreting the load of our agenda for executive session as somehow an avoidance, but actually, we went over our time and didn't have time. So I'm not sure how that, but that, that needs to be communicated frankly, not here at the dais, but through the normal channels. And so I would, I think you've misinterpreted. And so I'm, I'm not aware of your interpretation as presented. The board does not sit and meet in executive session to decide what we talk about and what we don't talk about.
I would agree.
I'll just stop there.
I would agree on that. I'm not aware that it was an intentional move to remove this particular negotiating item from the consent agenda. Although we had very long discussion, we were in negotiations with another contract group for over an hour plus our other agenda items that are reserved only for executive session. So I'm not sure what Eric Sarah told you, if that was even communicated correctly. But thank you very much for coming forward. Up next, Les Poole.
Chair of my.
Excuse me, Commissioner Scholl?
I'd just like to thank Mr. Clayson for your advocacy for the valued members of Wes. It's true that we can't discuss contract negotiations in this venue, but we have been briefed on the desires from the Wes ASME Union, and we'll continue to work on that. I'm not sure what the exact next date we get briefed on it is, but it's a concern. And I, from my perspective, I assure you that I'll balance the needs of Wes employees with the budget and rate taxpayers so that we can have the best overall acceptable resolution on this. So thank you for your time, sir.
Commissioner Schrader?
Yeah, I would say something anyway. Thank you for coming today. I, again, am not clear on exactly what the line item is, so, or how, how that fits into this conversation. So I will talk to our administration, get some clarity on that at some point.
Thank you. Commissioner Savas?
Yeah, I, obviously, we're all caught a little bit by surprise and don't understand what this is. But I would just say that if Gary was here and I'm looking to our deputy administrator to at least make sure perhaps that whatever communications happen, they're in writing so we can backtrack and make sure, ideally, they're in writing as opposed to, you know, verbal discussions sometimes will get misinterpreted and find out where the breakdown was. But, but maybe in the future, again, maybe perhaps put those communications in writing so they can be reviewed and figure out how a misunderstanding occurred.
Okay, yes, I'll be looking at it.
I'm not aware that any items were removed from last week's executive session.
I don't remember that either.
Yeah, none. Commissioner West?
Yeah, there's been, I mean, a number of conversations regarding this topic. Once again, we can't talk about it from the dais where in contract negotiations, it's not appropriate to your membership or to the taxpayer which we represent. It's a tough time, though. We can talk about the general economy. Yeah, there, Oregon, Oregon is, as a whole, is facing a lot of economic hardship, that's right. And we have to consider the rate, the taxpayer that pays the salaries of public employees. And we have to consider how that, the impact to the taxpayer also and make sure that we're being fair, not just to the, our valued workforce, but also to our stewardship of those resources. And Commissioner Savas said it earlier so well, is that we have a fixed budget, right, in the county? And it's a, it's a tough juggling act. So we'll be mindful of that. We want to continue the conversations. There's, I can guarantee you, there's no one on this board trying to stonewall. We may be far apart, we may be negotiating, but nobody here has the intent to stonewall anybody or to not hear from you. That is fact. And so I do, I really appreciate, it's not easy to come talk before us in a public meeting. I mean, I totally respect the fact that you had the courage to come up here and to speak your piece, and please continue to do it. It's the right thing to do, and you're doing a good job representing your membership. So we'll get to work, we'll continue to work on this. So, but, and thank you for voicing your concern.
Thank you. Please state your name, your area of residence.
Yes, Les Poole. I live here in Clackamas County, the best county in the state. We all got our issues, but this is number one. Early in the meeting, regularly, we have approvals for annexations. And while no one testifies on them, the reason I'm bringing them up is that almost all of them are around Damascus, Happy Valley, and in the growth area. And every time we see a approval for annexing into a water district or, or creating more lighting district, the message is really clear, it's growing like mad out there. And my biggest concern about the growth is transportation right now. And I would again encourage the county and the staff to do everything they can to pursue funding of the Sunrise Corridor Extension. That highway needs to get out to 172nd and eventually beyond. 172nd and 212 is slowly becoming a choke point, and it's right where the county meets Happy Valley. And there's just a lot going on there. So transportation is a big issue. I couldn't mention transportation without once again bringing up tolling. While the governor has paused the implementation of tolling, the plan is very clear, and that is to run a two-year test of charging to use existing lanes and then having the flexibility to put the money wherever they wish. And currently, the Federal Transportation Administration doesn't allow that. ODOT seeking permanent approval. Long story short, the two-year test area that ODOT has chosen, of course, is through the choke point in Stafford and dovetails with the Abernathy Bridge. In my testimony to ODOT on the Abernathy Bridge, I made it clear that they are counting on funding from tolling for a lot of what they want to do, but yet currently, tolling will only pay for expansions such as the new ramps. So it's a real mess in terms of tolling. And like Measure 110, something I would like to see is an advisory vote from the public on tolling. I'm not a gambler, but I'll bet you big money where that would come out.
How would you pose that question? What would the question be?
Support for a public vote, which would have to be statewide, but a strong, a strong message that the public needs to weigh in on this and that without that public involvement or awareness or some type of buy-in, this is going to just be a bigger disaster than it is. You can't really write it that way, but that's the message. So something that I hope that you can consider, I know advisory votes are not binding, but certainly, this is a big issue, and it'd be worthy of the effort. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Savas?
Yeah, I just want to maybe remind everyone that the board has sent communications for a number of years stating that in lieu of what ODOT's tolling proposal is for I-205, that we suggest that they use or consider express lanes, which happens to be a form of of tolling. So while we have been pretty adamant that we do not believe that their particular tolling proposal for I-205 is the right one, we have, again, stated our strongly consider and support for express lanes, which offers free lanes and choice for people. So that's where the conflict and the confusion would arise. So I, I think it's an interesting concept. But I'm also, I'm also mindful that advisory votes cost money, and you can't get enough words in to, to properly lay it out. So confusion happens because some people don't know it's advisory or assume that it was a, it was a formal vote, and therefore, you know, you should be taking action based on the, on the will of voters at that point when you really have no authority to. So there's a conundrum in there, or two, or three. Yeah, thank you.
Is there anyone else in the room who would like to testify? Tony, is there anyone online?
Madam Chair, we'll begin with Mr. Bill Weir. Mr. Weir, please state your name and area of residence. You have three minutes.
Good morning, Chair Smith and Commissioners. Bill Weir, Damascus. On January 19, 2021, there was an emergency meeting of the Leaders in Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Committee, LETIC. This committee advises the EDI department. The meeting started with the chairman giving the opening, then the EDI department head gave a summary of why they were there that night. She named off a commissioner's social postings before his taking office that was abhorrent to them. She then proceeded in giving a roster of all the correct-thinking Clackamas County Commissioners, all 22 department heads, media, and all the regional political literati that demanded his resignation. One got the sense that the purpose was not to engage in an objective investigation resolving a delicate issue. The purpose was to edit, edit a letter meant to shame and coerce an incorrect-thinking commissioner to resigning. They were in a rush to produce that letter so that it would be prominently displayed with the mass hysteria that was already permeating through the county building. The comments by the committee were such as, quote, "Never forgive, never forget," unquote. Quote, "We have to live with what he did," unquote. There was this collective mindset of permanent damage that was inflicted by him on them, and they were going to avenge it. They had power. Yes, in the future, even the right to vet candidates for public office. There was no one on the committee that expressed what they were about to do would cause damaged reputation and even physical danger for him and his family. Another department head in attendance agreed with their effort. He cautioned them that even though this was a public meeting, to keep it quiet, there was uneasiness that if the commissioner would not resign, they would demand he come before LETIC. Would he come? Well, even if he did, one committee person said, quote, "He is hardwired," unquote, and it would be useless. His coming sentence, surveillance by employees to compile a dossier on his activities over the next six-month period. Now, you'll find this meeting on the county site. It's like it never happened. And all their other LETIC meetings have no video library to see what they talk about. They prefer to operate in the dark. The French philosopher Voltaire once wrote, quote, "If you want to know who controls you, look at those you are not allowed to criticize," unquote. EDI needs to go. Please defund it. Thank you.
Tony, anybody else?
Continuing on the list with Ms. Christine Kennedy. Please state your name and area of residence. You will have three minutes.
Ms. Kennedy.
We can hear you, Ms. Kennedy.
Oh, thank you very much. My name is Christine Kennedy. I'm a resident of Lake Oswego, Clackamas County. And I recall very distinctly the first meeting with Ms. Tudi Scholl, Chair of the Commissioner, and with Mark Scholl. And distinctly remember it being the day after the insurrection at the Capitol. And I had already been very concerned because Chair Smith had expressed views about the pandemic and vaccinations. And all I can say is, at the end of the meeting, I was very concerned about some of the comments that Commissioner Scholl made, that we should just sit back and relax and trust Chair Smith, because she was a very trustworthy person, and we had nothing to worry about. So all I can say is, we're now in 2023, and I've seen a lot of performance of the meetings, and I have no confidence in Commissioner Scholl, and I wish he would not run for the commissioner role or the chair of the commissioners. I think it's good for him to stay home, to get some help, and to get serious about what his beliefs are in life. Thank you to the commissioners for all your hard work. That's all I would like to say. Thank you.
Tony, who's next? Commissioner Scholl, you're up.
Yes, I'd just like to say that on the, on about the 7th of January, what I said was, give her a chance. That's what I said, to give her a chance and not try to take action to criticize a chair after only her third day. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, or Tony, anybody else?
If you would like to testify, please use the raise hand feature, and I will call in you on the order received. Madam Chair, do not have any hands raised.
Thank you very much. This will close the public communication portion of this meeting, and we will move on. Nancy, what's next?
So next is our good news. Our county commissioner, our county administrator likes to share good news, and I'm going to do that today on his behalf. So first, we have more kudos for the staff at Department Transportation Development. Jeff from Estacada expressed his appreciation for the work of management analyst DeeDee Kraft. Jeff wrote in to note, "My family and I are completing construction of our replacement home in Estacada on a property that was heavily impacted by the Riverside Fire. DeeDee has not only guided us kindly through the process of applying for a fire hardening grant, but has also helped us secure additional financial relief that we would otherwise have missed. I can see from her emails that she works long hours in service and, and in service to her community. So we want to thank DeeDee for her excellent customer service." The second one is the Records Management Division of the County Clerk's Office is hearing compliments as well. County Resident Claire wrote in to Records Manager Carol Hopkins, "I wanted to relate the courteous and professional behavior of the Records Management Passport staff yesterday. I've been working on a passport issue for a while for my children and had them with me in the office with my husband. Our kids are 10, 8, and 4, so a long wait in the office can be a challenge. But Mahaj De Bahar was extremely helpful, patient, and courteous with us at the counter, while Bepin Long, Long and Paul calmed my four-year-old down with high fives and soliciting songs. They made what could have been a challenging experience actually quite pleasant, and thank you." So thank you for our great passports crew, and I'll turn it over you, to you, Chair, for Commissioner Communication.
Thank you. We'll start with Commissioner Communication. Commissioner Savas, you're up first.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Top of mind this morning is, I've been reflecting on some conversations I had in the last few days, last evening, and this morning, and, and just thinking about where we have been with regards to our response on the homeless, houseless front. As many of you may recall, we successfully opened the Veterans Village in 2018. We got that project up in late 2018, and it's been a success. And the, I, the goal then was to, in light of what was coming, where we are today, and perhaps things will get better in the future, I hope, but that we needed more shelter capacity. Several years ago, or a few years ago, I, I rang the bell to this commission to, we needed to really build more shelter capacity, and then respond. What's changed here most recently is that a number of jurisdictions are either considering, or a majority of jurisdictions our size are either considering or have considered or haven't acted camping ordinances. And in kind, to do that with, you know, compassion and leadership and response to the houses' crisis, they've also added shelter capacity. And it was just recently announced here, quite a bit of good coverage. And I thought a little bit of, you know, I thought it was a pretty interesting approach, what Washington County had done. But they have increased their shelter capacity significantly and, and enacted the, the camping ordinance. Portland has done in kind. They're adding capacity. Everyone seems to be, I want to say everyone, some of the larger jurisdictions or region are actively pursuing those tracks. And I really, in our planning meeting we had a couple weeks ago, I expressed my concern on one aspect of that, that being that the concern has been expressed, that if all the jurisdictions or a majority of jurisdictions enact camping ordinances, and we do not, that perhaps some people will be inclined to migrate to Clackamas County where we have little to no capacity comparatively, whether it's on a per capita basis or whatnot. So I just hope that we can take that discussion that we had here a couple weeks ago, thought it was a good discussion, and maybe talk with our staff and see how we as a board wish to prioritize or not those two avenues. I know our staff are working on, you know, a particular site, and so we are monitoring that, I, as well. So I'm grateful for that. But I think we need to really maybe put, or expedite perhaps, or prioritize, you know, this particular issue more so. My, again, my concern is that if we are caught, if you will, in a situation where people are migrating from other areas that, that implemented a how, a housing or a camping ordinance, and we have not, they'll, they'll just simply come here, and we don't, we're not prepared for that in any, any way or form. So that's what's at top of mind today, and I hope everyone stays cool out there in this heat wave. I have a lot of other things to discuss, but I know we have a busy agenda here coming up even today. So I'll yield back, Chair.
Thank you. I would do believe that this is being scheduled, it's been scheduled that H3A staff is coming back with this. Tony, it's on the green sheet.
It is on the green sheet, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, just take a look at your green sheet. Mr. Savas, staff is going to be making a presentation on the housing issue in particular.
That exact one, is that, I looked at the green sheet the other day. It was not, it was not there the other day, unless it's titled something different.
There is an entry under pending items from last week regarding camping regulations.
That's not camping. It's the other overall.
Well, what I'm, what I'm referring to is the, is the camping, potential of the camping ordinance.
No, you, but you made mention that we're not expanding capacity on our housing. I do believe that the staff is coming forward, Tony, to give us, we are approving a plan or looking at a plan next week. That's what I'm talking about.
Yes, apologies, Chair. Staff are planning to bring the first week in August, an update on proposals for the Supportive Housing Services Fund, the carryover balance that the county has recently, the board has provided direction on what priorities there are. And so they'll be coming back with an update that the first week of August.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, so Chair, just to, just to clarify, I, I did reference both. I also referenced the planning meeting in which I raised the camping ordinance itself, and that's what I'm, I want to highlight here. And I don't believe that's on the green sheet as I last looked.
Thank you, Commissioner Savas. Up next is Commissioner West.
Thank you. I'm excited to go to my first NICO event this week, but also to do a lot of collaboration work around thought leaders around addiction, homelessness, and mental health services. Have already started to make some of those connections and to learn from best practices across the country, what other counties are doing and how they're responding. It also just happens to coincide with an opportunity to visit some of the most successful and inspiring recovery campus or centers in the United States. We're going to visit First Community in Austin. And we're going to meet with the 22-acre New Haven Full Continuum of Care Campus in San Antonio. We're going to meet with county officials and learn about their process with getting these recovery centers off the ground. And I want to say, I'm really, really reflecting a little bit going into this trip, what we've already done in seven months as a Board of Commissioners, as we not only have we been very vocal in calling out the problem in Oregon, up and down the West Coast, and specifically in Portland, where elected leaders that have held the levers of power in the state for far too long have caused it to be a hollowed-out shell and a dystopian nightmare. We didn't just call that out, but we actually took some visionary action. We established an oriented system of, a recovery-oriented system of care through a resolution. That resolution is now gaining steam because it's inspired other cities, five of them, four counties on their own to adopt that resolution. They weren't just words, but those words are impacting policy. Another county met with me, their county commissioner came in this week and met with me, says, "We were so inspired by where we see a vacuum of leadership that Clackamas County is leading, and it rings true to us on how to fix this problem." And they passed that exact same resolution. Measure 110 Advisory Questions begins to put pressure as a county on the elected officials that have abdicated their role in the legislature and the governor. And now other counties are talking to me and saying, "Hey, Clackamas County, you're leading. We might want to pose these questions to our voters so that we can put that pressure, so we can not just wait for Measure 110 to be implemented while people die." Often, the other side just says, "Oh, just give us time. We're going to get, we're going to get the system, we're going to get it, we're going to get it up, and we're going to make it work." And, you know, it's just really immoral for us to figure out your broken policies to allow people to die in our streets. I'm going to review the questions that we did pass as a board that are inspiring other counties and other thought leaders, not just in Oregon, but also in other jurisdictions in the country. Clackamas County is inspiring, asking people regarding decriminalization. Our first question was, without us going to the voters, "Should legislators representing Clackamas County introduce past legislation repealing provisions of Measure 110 that decriminalize illegal drugs, including for juveniles?" Question two, "Should Governor Kotek call a special legislative session to address the Measure 110's drug decriminalization and its impact on crime and homelessness?" As this is an emergency of likes that I think future generations will ask us how we responded to it, and we're asking the legislature and the governor to do their part and actually do meaningful response in helping address this problem. Leadership from Clackamas County is, is, is happening. We just spent $58 million of SHS recovery, towards a recovery model that specifically helps people get clean, sober, and self-sufficient. That was real action. And I won't re-dilig, really, I won't revisit all the things that we designated funds for, but that is exciting, and I think will help not only prevent addiction, but also help people get free from it. We are real momentum behind the scenes, and you probably have heard of different public news, talking about recovery campuses, recovery centers that provides an entire continuum of care that allows, where we do not have that care in Oregon currently, and allows people to, to, to actually get free from these illicit substances. And we are also working on potentially continuing to replicate models like the Veterans Village where it has already been successful and grow that success. For time's sake, I will not go into more detail, but there is more. In seven months, that's leadership, Clackamas County. That's leadership in the void of it. We call it out, and then we do it the right way. And I'm super proud of this board and our continued effort to deal with this real crisis. And that is what happens when you elect a can-do board. And so I'm super proud of that. We're going to continue to do that work wherever we can, where we want to save lives. I, I want to, right now, Multnomah County is talking about, in their meeting, I believe it was today, about whether or not they should still continue the free distribution with taxpayer dollars of smoking pipes, foil, and snorting kits in, in Multnomah County. I read an article, and I'm going to, sorry, it's a little bit graphic, but I want to share it. It's a little bit graphic, but this is what Coin reported yesterday regarding the exorbitant amount of money they spent on these supplies. And due to outcry, bipartisan outcry, it's been paused. And this is actually in the news article, so forgive me, it's not usually something you would say in a public meeting. And I'm going to quote a piece of this. They also bought, and we're looking at distributing an educational pamphlet on boofing. They also bought, and we're looking at distributing, an educational pamphlet on boofing. I didn't know what boofing was, I continue to read. "Written by social activist Ceci Blanchard, titled 'A Harm Reduction Guide to Boofing.' That is the holy act of putting drugs up your butt. So using other orifices to get high because you've blown out your veins and don't have other options, that is policies that we have to deal with and the repercussions of it." Sorry, I just felt like we need to show the contrast of real leadership. And so I can see everybody coiling a little bit about that, but we thought that snorting kits, pipes, and charred foil scattered amongst the metro area was fine. Now we're going to teach people to boof. I also had the pleasure to take some Pulitzer Prize, a nominee for Pulitzer Prize journalist who is writing a book regarding the drug crisis in North America. He wanted me to take him around and show him the metro area. And so we visited Chinatown, we visited 33rd, where it's basically zombie RVs that line the streets. We visit, showed him pieces of Clackamas County Lloyd Center, open use, opener drug use, people that were in the active openly, blazingly using on street corners. And he said this to me, he goes, "You know, I've been all over the United States," and he goes, "What's unique about Portland is that I'm noticing really quickly is so many places have a very large concentration in a very specific area that where most of these issues are residing. But gosh, you guys have it infused in every community. It has inculcated itself, this dysfunction, in every community." And so I hope that we can continue to be bold to help people not have to live in this despair and not to see our beautiful state and our metro area impacted in this way any longer. And I think that I'm very confident in our work together, colleagues, in doing this, in that we can create a contrast in sane, common sense, practical solutions instead of what we have been witnessing for the last few decades in Oregon. And sorry to be so passionate and graphic, but I just, I think it's important that people know the reality of what we're dealing with.
Thank you. Commissioner Schrader, you're up.
Great. Well, I want to thank you, Commissioner West. We are going to be looking at recovery centers in Texas to get an idea of, they actually have probably one of the best recovery systems in the country. And I think we'll be visiting facilities in Austin, and we'll be visiting facilities in San Antonio.
San Antonio, yeah.
And the whole point of doing this, again, is best practices of how we move people from drug use to recovery, and I think that's where our focus is going to be as a county. I will say that I was never a supporter of Measure 110, because my concern was that the infrastructure for recovery was not in place at the level that we need to have in order to enable people to conquer their addictions. So I'm hopeful that looking at it from this standpoint, from recovery, and I will tell you that information shows that folks want to have that marijuana money put towards recovery activities. In fact, it's already there in those recovery activities. So to me, this is a key element that our county will be doing to help solve the problem. And I'm also working with some folks who are looking at getting a measure on the ballot, and I don't have the wording of that yet. And this is an actual measure that will take a look at the process and that nexus, that place where people do have to have an opportunity to enter the public justice, I think, public justice system, particularly in terms of the capacity we have for drug courts and diversion programs. I truly believe that there is a nexus there that we don't, we really can't lose, and I wonder if sometimes the problem is with the way things currently are, is that there's an accountability piece that actually is a framework for getting people into recovery sooner than later. So we have that process that is not punitive, as much as it is, it's part of that public safety system that moves people to where they need to be, and our job is to make sure we have the facilities for that. I know we mentioned NACO today, so I'm going to mention a few things about NACO. I'll be chairing on Friday the Community Economic Development and Workforce Committee. And since we talked about diversity, equity, and inclusion, I did look it up to see how at the national level with our fellow counties, it is, how it is framed. Diversity is the presence of different and multiple characteristics that make up individual and collective identities, including race, gender, age, religion, sexual orientation, ethnicity, national origin, socioeconomic status, language, and physical ability. So that's pretty concise. Equity, and this is where I think there's some disconnect, the process of identifying and removing the barriers that create disparities in the access to resources and means, and the achievement of fair treatment and equal opportunities to thrive, okay? And then inclusion is about creating environments in which any individual or group can be and feel welcomed, respected, supported, and valued to participate fully. So, colleagues, when we have our conversation about diversity, equity, and inclusion, I'll make sure that we have these things in front of us so we can really have a deep conversation about what this really means, so we don't get into this dynamic of culture wars, because I think that's kind of what's happening. I'm very worried about it. I would also add another word to this, however, I would call it D-E-I-R, and that is resilience. Because resilience is the capacity of people to bounce back from difficulties, toughness, having barriers, but having the resiliency and the strength and the ability to face them and bounce back and live productively. And I think that has to be a key component of how we view this. And the reason I say that is because, you know, I have an interracial family, and, you know, I have a son, and who's Korean, and, you know, when he has faced barrier, and he's, but, no, it's like I said, people do bad things to each other, Ben, you've always said that, always said that, okay? But the key then, component of that is when bad things happen to you, how do you bounce back and make sure that you have a family and a support group that loves you and trusts you, and no matter what, will be there for you? And so I think resilience in the diversity, equity, and discussion, you know, is going to be something that I would like to see added. I'd like to see it added across the board, across the country, because resilient people have to, they're the ones that face the barriers, they are the ones that bounce back, they are the ones that succeed, and I think that is a positive way to frame how people, how we get along in community in this country. Resilient individuals in resilient communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Scholl.
Yes, good morning, Clackamas County, and thank you to everyone who came here or called in to testify. I appreciate it. On tolling, it was in part the public outcry against the threat of tolling that resulted in the governor's decision to pause tolling, but it's only a pause. The battle against tolling and the very inefficient means to tax the people to pay for infrastructure must be fought, and we can spend a little bit of time now fighting tolling, or we can spend a whole lot of our personal time working to pay the toll after tolling began. So I encourage everyone to see votebefortolls.org, download the IP for petition, take it to your neighbors, get it signed, send it in, and we'll continue pushing back against this very inefficient means to pay for highway infrastructure. Another reminder, again, on 9 August, we have the Boring and Dull Days. Please join us in Boring at the Trailhead Park at 4:45 for a great time. And if you haven't put it on your schedule yet, 15 August through 19 August is the county fair and rodeos, so please come, join us there. On the public alerts system, a couple years ago, when we had the big fires, it wasn't working too well. Now it's working very well, and people who have signed up for the public alerts on their phone or their computer are receiving alerts when a fire or another issue affects their area. So please, see the clackamas.us/disastermanagement, and take a minute to sign up for the public alerts so you too can be informed with information that might affect your area. And finally, I'd like to say thank you to a citizen activist. He's been an example of what we can do when we as citizens get involved. And that person is Grover Bornfeld. He's the former District Advisory Committee Chair for the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District. When I became a commissioner some 30 months ago, there was talk about wanting new libraries, new cultural center, community center, new parks for their community. And now, two libraries are soon to be under construction, a new community center and cultural center is in the works, a new park is being planned and will be constructed in the near future. And so once again, Grover Bornfeld, a great citizen activist, and an example of how to get things done. And I think with that, I wish you all a good day.
Thank you. Yes, last night, this board convened as the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Board at Concord Community Center to have our quarterly meeting with that particular Parks District. And it was attended by our community activists and leaders. We do now have a new chair of that organization, and we welcomed him last night. It was a good time. This week, on Wednesday, this group took a tour of the construction of our county courthouse. It was very interesting, as you can see the crane out there and people milling around. Right now, there's about 80 to 100 people working per day, depending on what the jobs are. As we go up, it'll be a total of six floors. By the time we get to the fourth floor, I was told there'd be 350 people working on the courthouse. That's when we bring in all the trades to do the things like wiring, mechanical plumbing, and things that I can't even imagine. And we are providing jobs in Clackamas County, with Clackamas County Labor, to build this courthouse. And Nancy, I'm wondering what the total economic effect overall is going to be, because we see trucks coming in, and there are contract trucks, and there are different companies coming in trucks, plus the natural resources for rock and cement and dirt, plus all the supply chain issues. So I think maybe that's what we need to start calculating for some of our economic staff, if we can put a number on what the total economic effect and gain for Clackamas County is on that. I suspect it's going to be quite large. This afternoon, we, this afternoon, I have a meeting with the mayors of Clackamas County, and we're going to discuss many things. Several of our mayors in their local cities have implemented camping ordinances, and I'm going to ask them how well that's going, because it has just started. I'm also going to ask them if there's anything that Clackamas County can do with them or for them in enhancing their camping ordinances, because I suspect maybe that's the route that the county should be looking at, because in the more localized areas, it's going to be very difficult to implement camping in Clackamas County. We have to find a space, it has to be monitored. It's going to be very expensive, we have to have the willingness of the sheriff to come and patrol and do that. So I'm kind of leaning towards that, I'm going to talk to them in a very good discussion with that this afternoon. Also, ask them about possibly if any of the participants on the C4 regarding the tolling issue. So I suspect it'll be a very good meeting this afternoon with the mayors. I always like hearing from them, they always have good ideas. I offer the county's assistance as much as I can to help them on their goals, so we have many collective in-common goals together. Seeing no further business before this Board of Commissioners, we are adjourned.